Good evening. On behalf of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce, welcome to this evening's Candidates Forum for the 2022 primary election. This Candidates Forum features individuals running for Scottsbluff County Commissioner in District Number One. This Candidates Forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. Along with my co-chair, Don Wolf, my name is Bill Boyer, and we appreciate you joining us. We would like to thank the Rural Radio Scottsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, as well as the Scottsbluff County Clerk Kelly Sides for hosting us this evening in the Commissioner's Room. As a reminder, there are six Republican candidates running for Scottsbluff County Commissioner in District Number One. In the May 10th primary election, you will be allowed to vote for one candidate. The top vote getter in the primary election will advance to the November general election. There are no candidates from any other political party running this year, so most likely the winning candidate will be unopposed in the general election. Before we meet the candidates, I'd like to go over the format for this forum. Before we began recording, candidates randomly chose the order where they are seated and will be introduced. We'll begin by asking a question, and each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond. Then, there will be an optional 30-second rebuttal from each candidate following the answers. After the final question, each candidate will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. There are timers in the room, and each candidate has been informed of the format and the rules prior to tonight. None of the questions have been given to any of the candidates in advance. Now, let's meet the candidates for this forum for the Scottsbluff County Commissioner, District Number One. Michael Blue.
Good evening.
Clint Reason.
Good evening.
Mark Reichert.
Evening.
And Nancy Bentley.
Hello.
Rex Wilson and Timothy Reichert were not able to attend tonight's forum. Per the rules, statements can be read for those candidates who are unable to attend. However, neither candidate submitted a statement to be read. So let's go to the questions. We'll start with Michael first. Michael, explain what motivated you to run for election.
I felt motivated to run for the election because I've been serving citizens of Scottsbluff County for a number of years in a lot of different areas. And I want to see this area grow, but yet maintain its heritage of rural ranching and farming. I want this to be the kind of county that families want to move to and raise families. And I feel that the values that we have in Scottsbluff County really are important to our state as a whole.
Clint, explain what motivated you to run for election?
Well, I grew up in Scottsbluff County, miles south of Lake Minutere. For all these years, I just, I love this area. It's a beautiful area. I want to see it. It needs to be more than what it is. It can grow. I'd like to see more industry, more, more business come to our area because I see a lot of our younger people, like my, my kids, they've left the area. They don't see the careers and the jobs here that could keep them here. Scottsbluff County is one of the poorest counties in the state, which to me makes no sense. We got a beautiful county, a beautiful area, good access to natural resources. I don't understand why we can't be more of a popular county. On a whole, micro scale, coming back to roads, we have Lake Minutere out there, one of our largest tourist attractions in this, in the state. And we have a road that is so poor that we have ag traffic, local traffic, lake traffic, bicyclists traveling on a narrow outdated road that needs to be widened and have some shoulders on it. It is dangerous, and people keep getting killed, and people have gotten killed on this road. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of where I'm at with why I'm running. Thank you.
Mark, explain what motivated you to run for election?
Well, it's the same thing I did seven, about seven years ago because of the love of the people. I love the county. I love the people. It's home to me. I was born and raised here. I raised my family here, and now I have grandkids here. And I want to do, keep this town running, this county, I should say, running as best as it can. Basically, I want to just keep doing what I've been doing.
Nancy, explain what motivated you to run for election?
Well, I've been attending the county commissioner meetings since last August and really just wanted to learn more about county government and how I, as a citizen, could learn more and then have more input and help our community grow. I think Scottsbluff County has many opportunities, and I want to build on some of the strengths that we do have. My big thing is building partnerships to increase revenue streams and look at ways to operate more efficiently. So I too love Scottsbluff County, and I consider this a public service that I can give back to the community.
Thank you. Anyone need an additional 30 seconds there? Okay? I'm going to take just a second and turn this speaker down. We're starting to get a little feedback, more of you than we have before, so it should impact you just turning it off. I just don't want to, all of a sudden, you get something really exciting, it's squealing Okay, Clint, our next question is for you. What areas of county government interest you the most and why?
What areas of county government? Just the, the whole economics part of it, how we can build our county through economics with keeping our county still a safe, a safe area. That's kind of go back to my last point where I want to see us grow, but I want to keep us safe. So it's kind of economics and how we can control, we can build safely. I'd like to see that happen for our county. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Mark, what areas of county government interest you the most and why?
You know, I enjoy the whole process, everything that there is about it. But the main reason that I got into this politics is I want to look out for the taxpayers. Our people that live in this county, we work hard for our money. We don't need to have it spent on wasteful things. And that's what got me involved into it, and I want to keep doing my best to hold costs down and make the dollars stretch as far as they can.
Nancy, what are your areas of county government interest you the most and why?
Well, I came on it first just because of roads and bridges. I live out in the country, so I travel those roads and the bridges. And of our 220 roads or bridges, 60 of them are on a priority list because they're not safe. And so I think that's a huge issue that I would like to see remedied. I also am very interested in some of the legislation and unfunded mandates that might affect our county jail with, if they pass at the state legislator, then we will have to hold prisoners that we've never held before. And those unfunded mandates can cost our county as much as $3 million in construction costs, and according to Sheriff Oberman, also double his staff. So those are some of the main areas I'd like to work on.
Michael, what areas of county government interest you the most and why?
My priorities are the law enforcement portion of the county, the Sheriff's Department and the Detention Center. Because I want our citizens safe, and we do have one of the best Sheriff's Departments in the state. I've had the opportunity to train with them for 12 years as a transport officer. They have the best firearms training that I've ever seen. Also, the Detention Center. The Detention Center is blessed to have contracts with U.S. Marshal Service. We hold prisoners for Wyoming, the District of Wyoming, District of South Dakota, District of North Dakota, and also District of Nebraska. And I've experienced transporting those prisoners and working with the U.S. Marshals. Also, I really appreciate the staff we have at the Administration Building. They work hard. They make life very pleasant for me as a county citizen. And one of the things I want to work on is making a really positive work environment that they feel appreciated and that there's teamwork in the county between departments, between commissioners, between department heads, and the community.
Anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
Well, one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been following the legislature, the LB 920. This here would definitely affect Scottsbluff County if it was passed. What would happen is drug convictions would be reduced down to a Class 1 misdemeanor. That means those individuals, instead of going to a state prison, would go to their local county jails for up to a year. And we would have the expense of paying for that. And so that would be an added cost to the county that I don't want to see happen.
Great. Okay, we'll move on to our next question. Mark, we'll start with you. Paid holidays for employees continue to be a subject of debate between the Board and the Personnel Committee. How many paid holidays should staff receive per year and why?
Well, they're receiving, receiving 12 paid holidays right now. They're asking for another paid holiday, and I, everything you put in me is saying I'm noted that because banks only recognize eight holidays. And my constituents from my district don't want another holiday, paid holiday for, for employees. It's a matter of money. I mean, it takes $35,000 a day to pay the payroll for the county. So, we already got 12. They want 13. You take that $35,000 times 13 over the year, you're talking close to a half a million dollars. That's money that is spent for, for service not rendered. So, in my opinion, we've got enough paid holidays. Adding another one is not going to increase people coming in here applying for jobs.
Nancy, how many paid holidays should staff receive per year and why?
Well, I have visited with a lot of the staff here at the Scottsbluff County, and they are very dedicated. They have a lot of expertise. Being from human services background, I know the cost of retraining staff, and I would look for ways to negotiate some sort of benefit, whether it's another paid holiday or something else that would be a perk for those, for those staff. I believe that staff work hard for you, and they do need pats on the back. Maybe that's not another day, so I'm not going to answer your question directly because I'm open. I'm open to consideration and negotiation with staff to see how we can appreciate them.
Michael, how many paid holidays should staff receive per year and why?
Well, I worked for the federal government, and I had the traditional 12, and then I eventually had five weeks of vacation, which I could never use. Each job and each business has their own standards, has their own benefit package, and so it's hard to compare my business to your business when it comes to time today for time off. I'm like Nancy, I'm open about this. I can see where possibly allowing them to have the 13th day would be a great morale builder for them. And I do know, pay-wise, they are paid a lot lower than a lot of businesses in the area. And so maybe you could look at that as, we can't give you any more money, but we can reward you with another day off. But like I say, I'm open. I think that's something that needs to be negotiated between management and the county personnel board.
Clint, how many paid holidays should staff receive per year and why?
Interesting you'd ask this. I read your article today on the website, on KNEV's website, and I, I've been thinking about that because when I, I used to work for a local bank here in, well, in Scottsbluff. And I can't remember how many days we got for paid holidays. I think it was like 11 days. But we didn't get 12 or 13 or anything like, in 11 days, it worked for the con, the business is in town, so I think that county government should kind of follow that same route as a business. It should be kind of run as a business. With that in mind, in that article, it mentioned how county employees are getting paid maybe $2, $3 less an hour than a comparable job through a private business. I'm stuck on, you know, paid holidays, no more paid holidays. But I can see attracting more or better employees with a little bit better financial package. And I know we got to save money, and the taxpayers don't want to spend money, but we got to be competitive with private business. If we want to attract good people in county government, we got to be competitive with private, private, private business. So that's kind of where I'm sitting. No more paid holidays, maybe a better incentive package or paid, pay package for, for our employees that really deserve it, you know? And I know quite a few in the county here that they're hardworking, good people, and they, they deserve to be paid for their time.
Anyone with 30 seconds for a rebuttal? Go ahead, Mark, you're up first.
I mean, if you look at the total package with the insurance that our employees have access to, we've got a really good health insurance program. And today, trying to buy insurance on your own is astronomical. So when people talk about the pay being a little lower, if you look at the total package, it's actually a very good job.
Nancy?
I would just say that one of the, I think, one of the things that hurt morale was four years ago when the county commissioners gave themselves a 38% raise and only gave elected officials a 1.7. And that sent a message to staff that they weren't valued as much, and, and I do think that, that something needs to be done to kind of correct that situation. We, we can't have our staff with low morale and not feeling good about what they do. I see people here working overtime and not getting paid for it.
Michael, anything?
When you was talking about the health package, I worked with some young officers at the Detention Center years ago, and when you got this new health package, which basically was Obamacare, they couldn't afford the insurance for their families. It cost them $500 a month, and they couldn't afford it. Individually, they had insurance, but the co, the copay was pretty high, and then the, I forgot what you call it, anyway, they couldn't reach that point where they were getting their medical care paid for.
Deductible.
Yeah, deductible, that's what it is. And so really, that health package that the county employees have is not that great.
Clint, did you want to add anything?
No, good. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I promise you, we'll, you'll be able to comment some more on that here shortly, maybe even with this next question. So Nancy, we'll start with you. When it comes to administration of the departments reporting to the Board, what is the proper level of oversight that commissioners should exercise?
Well, I don't believe in micromanagement. I believe you hire good staff, you give them the resources they need to do their job, and you have quality control, quality assurance control, but you don't do micromanagement. You let them run their departments. You talk to them. You find out what they need for resources, what their issues are, what their problems are, and, and try to work together in a positive manner.
Michael, when it comes to administration of the departments reporting to the Board, what is the proper level of oversight that commissioners should exercise?
Well, they have to do their oversight as required by county policy, but I don't like to see micromanagement. That has no business in a business or a government agency. I also like to see commissioners who enable their department heads to become better and more proficient at their job to try things to make their departments more efficient. I also like to see good communication skills. Stop in once while at the department, say, hey, how's it going? And say hello to all the staff. Try to, try to create a positive environment. And also, team building. It has to be a team-building effort by both commissioners and the reporting department
Clint, when it comes to administration of the departments reporting to the Board, what is the proper level of oversight that commissioners should exercise?
Well, I, I kind of, like everybody's kind of mentioned here, you don't want to micromanage a, a situation like that. The thing is, if you're hiring good people to run these different departments, really all you should be needing is them to come and report to the Board and explain what they're doing, why they're doing it. They shouldn't have to be, commissioners shouldn't be have to step right in the puddle, if you might say, and try to take over a job that someone else has hired for. So, the commissioners, it should be an overall view with each department taking care of their own business. We should, we should let them do their job, and as long as they're doing it well, then we should stay it out of their business.
Mark, when it comes to administration of the departments reporting to the Board, what is the proper level of oversight that commissioners should exercise?
Well, it's not the commissioner's job to micromanage the departments. The people we have are very good. We are lucky to have the people that we have running our departments. Like I say, it's not the commissioner's job to micromanage, but it is the commissioner's job to see that the public's being served in an effective, amicable way. So that's how I stand on that.
Okay. Anyone with any extra thing they'd like to add? Okay. Well, most of you have already addressed part of this, but we'll start with you, Michael, on this question. The county has hundreds of miles of paved and gravel roadways, many of which could use improvement. What ideas do you have to speed up that process?
Well, it really boils down to funding, and only 2% of the taxpayers' taxes actually go towards road maintenance, and that's determined a lot by the state. I know Scottsbluff County has 165 miles of asphalt roads, which, once you put an asphalt road in, then you inherit a lot of maintenance costs. They have 810 miles of gravel road. Gravel roads are a lot less expensive to maintain, and I have to say, I've seen a great improvement in our gravel roads in my neck of the woods. They are very well maintained. And also, the part that money goes to bridges. We got 200 and some plus bridges in Scottsbluff County. So it takes money. And so I guess it really requires patience in some ways on our citizens' part to realize that the county roads is doing the best they can, and they're also investigating different options to be able to maintain those asphalt roads and gravel roads at a cost-effective way.
Clint, what ideas do you have to speed up the maintenance and, and repair process?
Well, I, I'm not a big fan of, like, I think, I'm not quite sure how the funding worked on the sock fields here a while back with, one, I think it's, I believe it's $1.5 million went into lockers and light, lights, and, and we're thinking about building the, I don't know how many millions it is for an aqua center. I mean, we have an aqua center called Lake Minutere. You know, if, if we could make the roads better, get better, you know, because we're already having a lot of Coloradians coming up here, and they're spending a lot of money in this area, maybe somehow we could have them almost fund road projects. Like, you go to South Dakota, very big tourist state, but about every road you drive on in that state is a nice, brand-new road. And I, I believe tourism could play a big part in helping fund, fund our roads and help, help keep things maintained a little bit better.
Mark, what ideas do you have to speed up the improvement process for roads?
Well, this is a thing that I've been, this is one of the big reasons I even be keeping a commissioner is because of roads. But when I first got onto this board seven years ago, the big thing that was bleeding of strife was the Detention Center. And all the money, excess money that we had was to keep that thing afloat. We had to work through that. We had to make some big changes. We added on to it a $4.4 million project and added 72 beds to it. And now that, and a lot of this thanks goes to Mr. Oberman because he is running that thing really well. What was costing us $900,000 to $1 million a year is now on its own and making money. So finally, once we got that straightened out, we finally had some money that we could start building back on our roads. And that's how come we ended up doing seven miles of Stegal Road last year. We had enough money budgeted. We were going to do five miles, but then we done some searching, and we come up with some new innovative ways, and we got to be able to do an extra two miles for the same amount of money. So I was kind of proud of that, that we didn't have to push a bond or anything like that. We got seven miles of Stegal Road done for the same amount of money that was going to cost us five, what we was going to do for five miles. But like I said, we did a really good job there. But we can't stop. We got 165 miles of pavement in this, in this county. We need to do 10 to 15 miles of overlay, chip sealing, whatever it takes to keep these roads up in shape. We've got to do at least 10 to 15 miles. I mean, just do the math, that's what it's going to take. We got to do that every year.
Thanks, Mark. Nancy, what ideas do you have to speed up the improvement process for roads?
I look at the surplus funds that the county has, which are the Keno Fund and the Inheritance Tax Fund. And those have monies in them that could go into, into roads. And so there are excess funds in both of those right now, and the county is well-stocked or has a good reserve, probably a four- to six-month reserve, which in business is considered more than adequate. So they could pay those monthly bills of the county if all other funding was gone. So I would like to see more money put towards roads. I would also like, I think we have opportunities to work with other counties now that we have an interim superintendent of roads. Perhaps we can work with some other counties and do some peer consultations. There are some counties that have much better roads, better gravel. I know in my area, which is on the southern end of the district, we have, we don't get good gravel out there. Our roads aren't crowned, and that's probably the number one complaint of my constituents. And so I, I think we have monies we could divert to that. I'd like to see it happen.
Okay. This is the last question on roads, so I'll give each one of you 30 more seconds if you have anything to add.
Well, roads will always be an issue. When you talk to your constituents, that's always one of the topics, the first topics they bring up. And I think through consultation with other counties, engineering companies, and previous road superintendents and commissioners, that we may be able to come up with a good plan to maybe speed this up a little bit.
Clint, anything else you'd like to add on roads?
We kind of mentioned the, the chip and seal on the, on the roads. It sounds good, but they did that road, that Stonegate Road, or was it Lake Minutere Road? Anyhow, all it did was break a lot of windshields, and you still got the same ruts, the same seams in the pavement, the same potholes. I kind of wish they wouldn't even done it because I got windshield broke, which my neighbors did too, from rocks flying off that thing. Kind of almost need to start over on roads, make them wider with some shoulders on them, and go from there.
Mark, anything else you'd like to add on roads?
Well, roads, roads are difficult, and I'm sorry about your windshield. But when you, you got a chip seal, there's no question about it because you can't, you got to keep the moisture from getting under the pavement, which gives it, and ruins it for, the chip sealing is, you have, it has to be done. We have to maintain. That's part of maintaining, and we can't help it, and I'm sorry about your windshield. You know, life isn't always beautiful, you know?
Nancy, anything else on roads?
I think I was pleased that the county bought some of their own machines. They used their own staff. They cut costs tremendously to do some of the work on the roads, and so I think that was a good use of funds and a good innovative use on the staff's part.
Thank you. Pardon the pun, but we're going to go down another road now. And Clint, we'll start with you on this one. What role should the county play when it comes to development of workforce and workforce
See, that's kind of, kind of a conflict because I'm a, I want to see, I want to see government as little as possible. And I'd rather see a private industry or, you know, come in and, and be able to do things. I don't, I don't want to see government doing things that private individuals could be doing, but as far as workforce development, I've seen our local center here years ago, they helped me get through college, and it helped me. I mean, it was a, it was a great leg up and gave me future career opportunities. So I'm, I'm pretty conflicted either way on this. I want to see, I don't mind paying for somebody's education that can go on to better the community. But I just don't want to see too much government influence in, in this also, if that makes sense.
Mark, what role should the county play when it comes to the development of workforce and workforce housing?
Well, we all need a workforce. I mean, everybody is asking for employees, and they're hard to get. But as far as the government stepping in, providing housing, no, I don't believe in that. I believe that a smaller government is better. The smaller the government, the better, I think, we all are. But... But to try to keep people, you know, it's going to take industry to come into, that's what draws people. Industry draws people, good-paying jobs. If you have good-paying jobs, then they can afford housing. So that's how the capitalist system works, and that's how, and that's what I'm all about.
Nancy, what role should the county play when it comes to the development of workforce and workforce housing?
Well, this is kind of my background, as you know, working as the CEO for the Housing Partners of Western Nebraska. I think the county can play a role in reducing barriers for both public and private to bring in businesses and to bring in affordable housing opportunities. So I would like to see, through planning commission, through commissioners' efforts, to encourage other businesses to come and for both the private and the public to develop housing. There's definitely an extreme need in our county for that. So that would be...
Michael, what role should the county play when it comes to the development of workforce and workforce housing?
Well, I truly believe the county could be a, kind of like a liaison, and tap into different resources out there. In their own community, we have the Career Academy at Scottsbluff High School, they're building houses. They have a kind of a Career Academy in Gearing. We also have community colleges that have building construction, trades that they're taught. You know, those kind of people could be brought in to keep the cost down in building affordable housing. Because right now, in our valley, rent is super high, and starting wages are super low, and it's really hard on these young families to even be here and try to work and be able to rent a home. And I think also, like Nancy, cooperation with the different planning commissions, come up ideas, brainstorm, you know, try to get the community involved in ways, and also properly, some of our property owners, would they be willing to possibly donate or sell at a reduced cost a section of land that could be used to build some of these houses? And then I think we do a much better job of bringing in manufacturing. Manufacturing is needed in this area.
Anyone have anything that like to add on that?
I do.
Okay, Mark?
Okay, what about the taxpayer that's already here? If you say rent's high, I happen to have rental property, and I don't think it is. But regardless, what about the people that have homes that they want to rent, or businesses they want to rent, or buildings, commercial buildings, whether they want to rent? And if the government steps in, and starts billing for this person, or that person, then you are making, you're having a disadvantage to that person that, and I'll stress, he's a taxpayer already in this county. So you're pitting government against its own citizens when you do that. Back again, I'm a capitalist, I believe in the system, and I would not be for building houses, using tax dollars to build houses.
Nancy?
Well, I don't think I said build, use tax dollars to build the houses. I said eliminate barriers to building houses. And I think there are a lot of codes that could be changed, sizes of streets, the street lengths, widths, some of those things could really help a builder. If, if the private sector can make money doing it, they will do it.
Exactly.
And if they're not doing it, that says it's probably not going to be done unless you can incentivize them in some way. So I would look for incentives for private people to get involved in building housing.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm not for tax dollars being used for building low housing. What I'm encouraging is to the county to be the liaison person, to kind of get the ball rolling, and get these different planning commissions involved, and use the resources out there to build these homes. There's ways of doing it, but you got to bring your team together to get it done. But the thing is, you got to have businesses they can work for, you know, and that's a real problem in Scottsbluff County.
So basically, we need to focus on bringing industry, and then people will have enough money to build these homes on their own.
Right.
Okay, Clint, we didn't hear from you everyone, so make sure you don't want to add anything before we move on.
I'm good.
You're good, okay.
I'm listening to all you guys.
Let's go to, Mark, we'll go to you next. If a horse racing track and casino are built outside of Gearing, the county stands to receive a considerable amount of funding from that industry, what would be the best use of such revenue?
We could stick it in a lot of places. You know, increase wages for the employees. The bill, we just got done talking about roads and bridges and pavement, we got 160, I mean, there is a number of ways we could use that money.
Nancy, what would be the best use from those revenues?
Well, I agree with Mark. You know, my first priority would be the roads and bridges, safe bridges, very good roads. We're so far behind on maintenance of roads that if we had a supercharge of money, we could really get the roads on track, and then perhaps we could keep the maintenance going better. I've talked to my constituents about casino and said, are you for, are you against, what do you think? Because it is a revenue source, and we've just talked about the county needs more revenue. And I had no one say that they did not want to have a casino here in Scottsbluff County. People were for it. However, the state legislature, as you know, kind of put the kibosh to that with a study now that has to be completed before they can add any new casinos. And so that puts us out to January of 2025 before that study is completed. But I had no one say that they wouldn't be in favor of that casino. And I think it's because it's a new revenue source, it'd be jobs, and with that will come the need for housing.
Michael, what would be the best use of those revenues?
Well, I think for this county, initially, be our roads, bring our roads up to standards. Also, our bridges, bridges are very hard to maintain, very costly. Some of our bridges, we have to maintain to state standards, others we don't. Also, I think, pay for our law enforcement, our sheriff's department. I'd like to see that brought up to a comparable wage compared to a county equal size, equal staffing. Also, our fire services in the county, our voluntary fire departments, I think they too could benefit from a portion of those funds.
Clint, what would be the best use of those revenues?
I'm pretty much in agreement with everybody here. And my whole point of running was, I'd like to see better roads in this county. And with this casino coming in, I would love the idea of this casino, it's not a tax, it's people voluntarily handing money over to help us improve our county. I, because I don't want to see new taxes, I think our tax is too high anyways, but, but this could really be a good source for us, and we could put it into roads, and put it into the, even just Scottsbluff Grand Highway, it's rough, and the shoulders are bad, or, you know, every road you look at in this county, there's potholes, you know, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, I think if I heard all of you correctly, you're in favor of more money for the county. You can all agree on that one, okay. Nancy, we'll go to you for our next question. Commissioners also sit as the Board of Equalization. What do you believe is the proper balance to strike when you consider valuation protests?
Well, I think you have to look at the facts that are presented to you by the assessor. You have to look at what the property owner brings as information. And then you have to look at, from the county's standpoint as well, do they, do they agree with the assessor? Sometimes those decisions are overturned, and it depends on what the homeowner or property owner brings to the table. So I've seen it go both ways, and I think they just have to be informed, they have to listen, and they have to, you know, try to give both sides equal opportunity to share their information, and then just make a good, responsible decision.
Michael, what do you believe is the proper balance to strike when considering valuation protests?
Well, I've always heard that they don't listen, and I disagree with that. I think that commissioners do listen when they go into protest. And I think the commissioner should educate himself on the prices of real estate, and also the assessor. And when somebody does come into protest, they need to sit down and look at that, look at the map, the property, see what buildings they have, what size of buildings, what kind condition those buildings are in. I think it's good to have people trust their county commissioners and county assessor to listen to their complaints in a courteous manner. And like I say, lately, I've heard people who come in to protest and walk away quite happy. And in the past, years ago, that usually wasn't the case. And so I think the county and the commissioners come a long way in that, in that field.
Clint, what, what do you think is the proper balance to strike when considering valuation protests?
See, that's it. The past few years, we've had a lot of, a lot of people moving in here from other states. And just in my area, I can count five properties that have sold for about two to three times more than what, what they're really worth, as considered farm ground or ag land. They're, they're just, people are escaping some of these states, coming up here and buying our beautiful areas, and it's hurting the locals, because, I mean, if these places right around me are selling for two to three times what they're worth in my taxes, every year, they just keep going up, going up. And I, I can complain, but it's pretty easy to pull comparables from the properties right around me there showing, I'm not out of line, I'm in with the market, you know, my place is market value. It's a tough, tough call, because in the end, I'm not making any more money off my place, but taxes are going up. And I have some wealthy neighbors, I guess, so it's a fine line. I, but I think they're doing the best they can with it.
Mark, what do you believe is the proper balance to strike when considering valuation protests?
Okay, I've sat through a lot of protest hearings, and we really do try to help our citizens out the best we can. They come to us, depending on the circumstances and whatever circumstance they may have, they have to show us something. And if they can show us something that would say that their, that the assessor's office has their property value too high for whatever reason, we are glad to help them. And in fact, I think you're kind of related to that. We, like I say, this is my eighth year in this now, and we really try to keep our citizens, you know, be fair with everybody. But back to the point, Chris was making, I too, I live on a small farm southeast of Minutary, and it's pretty close to the river. And my neighbor sold a piece of property for $1 million. That same piece of property sold a few years later for $3 million. My little farm has increased 240%. Okay, not that I'm complaining about that, but I'm still trying to pay my taxes with that same little piece of dirt that I got to scratch out of. So the whole concept of real estate taxes, in my opinion, is not right. I know Senator Erdman tried to spread, bring about a consumption tax, he called it, and it didn't make it, but we need to try to figure new ways of taxing other than property taxes, because that is an unfair tax. I know people that have, that make a lot of money, and they don't have much property, and they pay little tax. It's not fair.
Anyone else want to add anything on valuations?
I agree with Mark. It does hurt when you have property close to other property, it gets sold for higher rates.
You know, they might need another category, or something, call it recreational property, or whatever. The whole concept of real estate taxes, in my opinion, is not right, because why, I use real estate as a tool to make my living, just like a carpenter uses a hammer to make his levy. So why, like I say, I know people that own little property, make a lot of money, and their kids are going to the schools, and they're driving the roads at the same as we are. It's an unfair tax.
And I would second that. I mean, there's got to be a better way, and I think the legislature's looking at it, but I don't think there's any solutions out there right now for property tax in any of the legislation that I've, that I've researched. So that'll be another year.
Great. All right, we'll move on. Michael, back to you. Many of the top administrative positions in the county are also elected. What would you do to foster a spirit of cooperation with those offices?
Well, if I was county commissioner, I would go meet with them one-on-one and get to know them as a person and an individual first. Find out their strong points, their weak points, probably stop and visit them quite frequently, but also find out if there's something they need from us to help them do their job better, and just go out of my way to make sure, if possible, we could provide that. But I think the big thing is communications, getting to know your department heads, spending time in their office in a casual atmosphere, just visiting about how things are going, and I'd say even so much is to learn about their families. When I was in the military, I knew all my guys as wives and kids, and it really helped me as a unit commander know what my people could do, and I'd like to see that in the county, where commissioners get to really know their elected officials and create this air of cooperation. And that would flow down and reflect on the staff that works in those departments. The big thing is good communication skills and creating a positive work environment, whether they're elected or hired.
Clint, what would you do to foster a spirit of cooperation with other elected offices?
That was a great statement. I sort of think about that, I'm, well, you know, yeah, just communication, going, getting around, talking to these different heads, and, and, you know, somebody, I can't remember who I was talking to, they said, heck, half their job is consist, just working with people's personal issues, their home life, is half their job, and the other half is, you know, actually working. So as far as being a boss goes, understanding employees, figuring out if you can help them out, you know, not try it, get in their personal business, but if they need something, help them out. And it's kind of just communication, getting to know your people, stand on, stand on a first-name basis with everybody.
Mark, what would you do to foster a spirit of cooperation with elected offices?
This is what we've been doing, and what I've been doing for the last seven years. I know all the department heads, I know them by their first names, I visit with them, I go in there, and I can step into their office at any time, and we can have a friendly conversation. And that's how you build relationships, and that's how you cooperate. You know this person, you know how they're going. It's the interaction, it's the interaction that, and that's how you build cooperation, that's how you get things done. So basically, what Mike said, but, and that's what I've been doing for the last seven years.
Nancy, what would you do to foster a spirit of cooperation with other elected offices?
Well, I've already been in their offices, sitting at their desk and talking to them, and I think the communication, the appreciation that you show towards them, they are a wealth of resources and a wealth of knowledge and experience. So I've been asking, not only what resources do they need, but what ideas do you have to reduce the mill levy? And so these folks are forthcoming, they know their departments very well, and they can share those ideas. And I think that's a tremendous way to build rapport, to build cooperation, and again, it comes down to just communication. So I think we've already, everybody's trying to do that, it sounds like, and that's, I've already done that with many of the elected officials. I am very proud of the workforce that Scottsbluff County has. They are dedicated, they have great expertise, and they have great ideas.
Great. Anyone have anything to add? Okay, Clint, you're next. What is your stance on unfunded, unfunded state and federal mandates, and why do you feel that way?
Wow, I'm totally against mandates. The federal government shouldn't, my body, my choice, the federal government, state government should have no say on how you, on your, your, your decision-making. So with that said, mandates, bad, against them.
Mark, what are your stance on unfunded state and federal mandates?
Of course I don't like them. Whenever the state tells us that we have to do this, 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 and, hey, figure out how to, how to pay for it, that's totally unfair. There's a bill trying to get onto the floor right now at legislature, I think it's called LB 233, don't quote me on that, but there's a bill right now. So, I mean, if people are going to get involved, call your senators and get that bill passed to end unfunded mandates. That would be a tremendous help for us.
Nancy, I know you addressed it a little earlier, but what are your stance on unfunded Nancy, I know you addressed it a little earlier, but what are your stance on unfunded federal mandates and state mandates?
Uh, definitely opposed to them and the bill number is LB 263 CA.
There you go.
Introduced by Senator Blood, but it's a bipartisan. It's not, uh, just one, uh, one party. It's a bipartisan bill that's been introduced to, uh, to eliminate unfunded state mandates. And so when those come down, it hits the county right in the pocketbook. There's nothing you can do. And so there are many of those and, and again, that criminal justice reform bill, if we have to take on all of those prisoners that we've never taken on before because now we have to house the misdemeanors, uh, that's gonna be an extremely high cost for the county. And so I am opposed.
Michael?
I am definitely opposed to unfunded mandates, whether they be state or federal.
Okay. Anyone with anything else to add?
No.
All right.
Yep, well, I could probably say it now, but yeah, I, you know, these bills that we're talking about, that people need to get involved and stop the, cause this can be stopped before it even gets out of legislature. These unfunded, I mean, yeah, we'd like to get the unfunded mandate, what was it, LB 2?
263 CA.
263 CA. I mean, call your legislature people and try to get that passed. People need to get involved on that.
I call my senators a lot and, and say, where, what's your stance on this and, and why are you, why are you voting this way? Why do you feel that way? And so I think everybody should do that. It's good practice.
All right. Mark, last question before your, as his closing statements. Uh, at the end of, uh, a four, the next four-year term, if you're reelected, how would you define success?
Getting 10 to 15 miles of road paved every year. That'd be, that'd be really great. Continue what I'm doing, um, success. I know, I feel that we've been pretty successful already. We've got a great rapport. The other board members, we get along very well. We, we work together well. I work great with all the department heads. It's already been successful, but I still like to work on the roads and I'd like to get more done there. And, uh, like I say, we had to stop the bleeding at the, at the detention center so we could, uh, have some money to work on these roads. And now that that's happened and I gotta give special thanks to Mark Overman for that because he was running that like a top. And now because of that, we have the money to start fixing bridges and roads and doing more for gravel roads and everything like that. So, that's what I do.
Nancy, if you're elected at the end of a four-year term, how would you define success?
Um, better rapport with our elected officials and our staff and the county commissioners. Uh, reducing county commissioner salaries, I'd like to see them cut by 50%. I do believe we are public servants, that we do not need, uh, high salaries. I do also, uh, believe that, uh, roads of course are important and I would like to see the mill levy, the budgets very carefully monitored so that if we can lower property taxes in our area, we get it done.
Michael, if you're elected at the end of a four-year term, how would you define success?
Success to me would be all areas of the county working more efficiently. Also, a work environment where we have waiting lists for people who want to apply to work for the county, especially in our detention center, our sheriff's department. In fact, just all areas. Uh, I know like a roast department, they got 31 employees. It'd be nice to have a few more and then have a waiting list of qualified individuals who want to work for our county.
Clint, if you're elected at the end of a four-year term, how would you define success?
Oh, I could see success in Scottsbluff County is, uh, attracting more industry, more jobs, um, keeping our, our youth, our, our kids graduating, staying here, um, starting their own businesses. Um, I, I could see success as far as our taxes. Um, like we were talking earlier about, you know, these farms around us are selling so high and more of an equitable, uh, fair system for taxing the farmers around here that are, they're, um, they're bleeding to death, you know, from the, the, the high property values right now. Um, I just see success as the government just stand out of our way. Less regulation, less, just letting people, uh, letting businesses grow and, and thrive and, and be a welcoming, welcoming county for, for, uh, for that to happen.
Anyone else want to add anything? Well, uh, that was the last of our questions, so we'll give each one of you, uh, 60 seconds, uh, to give a closing statement. Uh, next on our list would be Nancy, so you get to go first with your closing statement.
Okay. Scottsbluff County has many opportunities. We have strong staff, uh, who have expertise and dedication to make the county even better. I want to build on those strengths and seek partnerships to increase our revenue stream while looking for ways to operate more efficiently. My expertise lies in fiscal management of multiple high-performing agencies while increasing affordable housing. I want to reduce barriers so that the private and public sector can fill those needs because it's a high need in our county. I'm a conservative who will put your tax dollars to work to build better roads and safer bridges. I'm an outside-of-the-box thinker. I believe in community input and will always have an open door to listen to my constituents. Together, we can make Scottsbluff County a better community to live in, to grow our families in, and even to retire in. I want to thank the chamber for hosting this event and I challenge each person to do their own research and most importantly, to make their vote heard in the May 10th primary as only one of us will move forward unopposed. Exercise your freedom, exercise your right, and vote on May 10th. Thank you.
Michael, you have 60 seconds for a closing statement.
Well, I believe in servant leadership. One must be willing to serve in order to be an effective leader. My experience as a military officer has provided me effective leadership skills. I have extensive training and experience in emergency management and search and rescue operations to include advanced ICS 400 for command and general staff in an emergency. I have served for 16 years as a trainer, team leader, tracker, and chaplain for the Scottsbluff and Banner County Cert team. I have completed dealing with difficult people, suicide prevention, and human trafficking trainings. I served 12 years as a Scottsbluff County Detention Center Transport Officer. I am currently employed part-time as a federal security contractor and a volunteer chaplain for Valley Amphitheon Services. I would consider it a privilege and a calling to serve as your Scottsbluff County Commissioner. I'd like to thank the chamber for having us all here and thank my fellow candidates. They're a great bunch of people. Thank you.
Clint, you have one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. You've done a great job with questions and, uh, it's kinda neat to see, uh, I love when people get together as a, you know, the whole community thing, good ideas coming from every angle to come up with good solutions. And I, I've always loved that part of government is where, uh, not overwhelming government, but good minds come together, make solutions, build a community, keep a county, um, like Scottsbluff County, beautiful and awesome. Um, I would appreciate the opportunity to serve as a county commissioner. I think I could, uh, kind of good solutions, have good ideas, find ways of doing things to, uh, improve our, everything from what we've talked about, roads to everything else. Um, thank you for your time and I've appreciated being here.
Mark, we'll end with you. You have one minute for a closing statement.
Well, I've been doing this job now, seven, going on eight years. Pretty much everybody knows how I stand. I'm a staunch conservative. I've been that way from the get-go, so, but I just want to say that managing the budget the size of Scottsbluff County and the 30-plus departments, it's, it's a, it's a tough task. It's a big task. Thankfully, we have good people that's running those departments. I mean, without them, it just wouldn't happen. But still, yet the commissioners need to coordinate the departments working together and, um, that's what we've been doing. That's what I've been doing and that's what our current board has been doing. And, uh, but to do that too, you, you need to stay in touch with your constituents. You really gotta keep your head in the game all the time. It's, you know, people that say that, oh, the commissioners, they meet twice a month for a couple hours and that's, they're totally misled, they're misinformed or just uninvolved. But what, I want to get across here, it's, it's a tougher job than most people realize, but I'm glad to do it and I'd like to keep doing it for you if you'd like what I've done and, uh, want me to continue. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. We'd like to thank all of our candidates running for Scottsbluff County Commissioner and District Number One for participating in tonight's forum. We hope that this helps you in deciding who you wish to vote for. As a reminder, in the May 10th primary election, you'll be allowed to vote for one candidate. The top vote getter in the primary election will advance to the November general election, most likely unopposed as no other candidates have filed from other parties. This candidate's forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. We again would like to thank the Rural Radio Scottsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, our timers from WNCC for volunteering, the chamber staff, and Scottsbluff County Clerk Kelly Sides for hosting us this evening in the commissioner's room. On behalf of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee and for my co-chair, Don Wolf, I'm Bill Boyer. Thanks again for joining us and remember to get out.